Great, good evening. It is approximately 6:31 on Wednesday, February 7th. Welcome to the Northborough School Committee Meeting. For tonight's agenda, we have three of our school committee members are participating remotely. So Bryce and I are present in person, and Joan, Lauren, and Kristen are remotely participating. So we will do a roll call vote for all votes that are going to happen tonight. Let's see, first on the agenda is audience sharing. Alrighty, moving right along. New business, Principal Reports by Michelle Carb. You can come on up?
So, looks like things are pretty busy at our schools. At Lincoln Street School, staff and students are showing up and digging in for the final weeks before February vacation. Last week, our student council leaders organized a coin drive to benefit the fifth grade charity of choice. The school raised $2,041 to donate to the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. On Tuesday, we had our sliming assembly, where six teachers and Principal Callahan volunteered to be slimed by the winning classrooms. This was the culminating activity from the fun run fundraiser back in November. The principal for the day winner led the festivities. This week, our PE staff has organized the annual Super Bowl food drive to benefit the Northborough Food Pantry. Kindness Week begins next week, and we have a spirited theme for each day. Students and staff will share positive messages, helping hands, and spirited joy in various ways throughout the week. Students at Lincoln Street continue to challenge themselves with ST math. We continue to celebrate these successes with prizes, awards, and end of the week announcements. Students and staff are engaged in our new literacy curriculum, Witten Wisdom. This past Monday, Northborough South Row ELA Curriculum Leaders participated in a site visit to Clinton Elementary School to observe Witten Wisdom curriculum through a different lens. The Z School on the 29th, Z held their monthly zebra families. This month, we took advantage of the fresh snow, and each family created a snow sculpture. We had an amazing time as a school community, working together and showing our creativity, and it has been wonderful to watch them slowly melt over the past two weeks. Today was World Read-A-Loud Day, so students had virtual visits with different authors during their library classes. Students learned about the writing process, as well as how authors get inspired about what to write about. Thank you to our librarian, Alyssa Rosalini, for organizing this experience for our students. For Northborough Kindness Week next week, the fourth graders have organized a donation drive to help support the Ahisma Haven Animal Rescue. Finally, next week will be a spirit week as a way to have some fun before February break. The month of January, Proctor, was filled with exciting events and achievements. We kicked off the month with a visit from Gigi, our ST math penguin friend, and marked our progress with a lively, school-wide bingo game. It was a fantastic way to celebrate the hard work and dedication of our students in ST math. Waddles, our beloved school mascot, made his first appearance in quite some time last evening at the NS Borough Reads Celebration at Algonquin. A big shout out to Mrs. Bailey, our library media specialist, for her efforts in helping to organize and promote the event. In celebration of the 100th Day of School, our creative fifth graders decorated the waddles in our lobby, adding a fun touch to our milestone celebration. Additionally, our fifth grade band and chorus members showcased their talents in a winter concert, thanks to the efforts of Mrs. Makara and Ms. Burns. The third grade Proctor Penguins had an informative visit from the Northborough Fire Department as part of the SAFE program, emphasizing the importance of safety. Special thanks to Mary Ellen Duggan and our Northborough Fire Department. Proctor PTO continues to play a vital role in upcoming events and is also a special event for all grades coming in March. Looking ahead, we are gearing up for Kindness Week next week, where our Castle students and fifth graders from the Proctor Spirit Committee will join forces to throw posit- to spread positivity and kindness throughout the school in our theme of Throw Kindness Like Confetti. And at the Peaslee School, they also celebrated the 100th Day of School. The lovely kindergartners reminded us of this big event with a parade around the halls of Peaslee, wearing their special capes adorned with their student-designed 100 Collections. This is a favorite annual tradition. The Peaslee Castle Program continues to bring the Castle Cart. The cart encourages students to go door-to-door to present and sell their creative crafts. This opportunity to build communication and counting skills is led by our Castle teacher, Elizabeth Fitzgerald, and speech and language practitioner, Judy Southey. Together, they led students to design and organize the cart of seasonally themed items. Teachers in grades K to 5 continue to meet weekly in their professional learning communities. Thank you to our Peaslee PTO for their continued commitment to providing high-quality enrichment programs at our school. And lastly, we will hold a Show the Love Spirit Day on February 14th. Students are encouraged to wear pink, red, or Valentine's Day-themed wear, and to bring non-perishable items to contribute to our monthly food drive to support the Northborough Food Pantry. And finally, at Melican, our math team came in first out of nine schools last Thursday in the Math Count Central Mass Chapter Competition held at Westborough High School. There were approximately 60 students competing. Three Melican students earned the, earned places in the top six, with a first place, third place, and sixth place finish. We're looking forward to the state meet on February 15th. We're currently also holding a sock drive to help local veterans. For a person experiencing homelessness, a pair of new socks is so much more than just an item of clothing. We'll deliver these socks to homeless veteran, to the Homeless Veteran Shelter on Grove Street in Worcester. We are also preparing for our annual Student Faculty Basketball Game on Friday, February 16th, where our combined boys and girls inter-scholastic basketball teams take on our staff. This is a favorite tradition for all involved, including the eighth-grade spectators. Our teachers are organizing alternative activities for students who may not be interested in the game. As our basketball season draws to a close, we are looking forward to our Unified Basketball Season, which begins in March. Course selection for our eighth graders begins next week. After Algonquin holds its Curriculum Night on Thursday, students, staff, and families will work over the next several weeks to select courses for ninth grade.
Lots of going on. Thank you so much for the principals who aren't here, who prepared that, as well as you for presenting it. I appreciate it. Does anybody have any questions about that? Anything? No? Good, okay. So, do you want to start with the school improvement? We'll end with the PTO presentation? Little bit, little bit.
So, thank you for having us. We're excited about the opportunity to share some of the updates regarding our 2021-2024 School Improvement Plan. And I think everyone is aware of the district mission and core values, and our school improvement plan is directly aligned to the district strategic plan. So, our school improvement plan has five goals. The first two are connected to empowering learning. Our third goal is connected to equity of opportunity. Our fourth goal is connected to healthy and balanced learners, and our final goal is connected to educator leadership and learning. And so, this is the third year of this plan, and we are excited about the progress that we have made. We continue to make progress toward our goals. So our first goal is around increasing the integration of the DLCS power standards into our existing curriculum. And what I did was, I took a chart that we had from last year, and then I added the far-right column, just so we could sort of see some of the progress. So I'm just going to focus on the far-right column in that tan color. So, one of the, one of our progress areas is around our own DLCS toolbox. The district has one, but Melican also has one. And we have a PLC that is led by teachers that works on adding items to this toolbox, which is shared with all teachers. And our instructional tech specialist continues to work with teachers to integrate technology into the classroom. Our curriculum leaders continue to work within their departments to help students meet some of those DLCS standards. And then finally, the last highlight is regarding a DLCS class that we added this year to our sixth-grader's schedule. So this is a weekly class that all sixth graders attend, and this is really helping them with collaboration and digital tools, and it is really helping them with those DLCS standards. These are just some photos of, you know, technology being integrated into content area classrooms. The far-right corner is a student in our, at your school VR club. So we do have several clubs that are connected to technology, but it's just a sort of a seamless part of how we do business. So those are just some photos of kids engaging and learning with technology. And then our second goal is around high-quality instruction. And so it was to collaborate across disciplines to ensure consistent implementation of high-quality instruction. And so again, on the far-right, just some updates and some highlights. So this is our first year of full implementation of Carnegie Math. All of our teachers are working extremely hard, keeping up with a pacing guide that makes sense, providing opportunities for students to explore and learn and work together. And it's really exciting to go into classrooms and see students engaging in Carnegie Math. This year, our ELA group is working with Trattier, led by Megan Kelty, and we are investigating and exploring curriculum materials for ELA. And hopefully, we'll be implementing something new there as well soon. Our specialist PLC, which meets once a month, is focusing on UDL this year, specifically providing students with more agency and choice in the classroom. And then, the last two focus on intervention, the last two on the right. We are really excited about our math intervention program, which has grown over the years. This year, we were able to get started right away, the first week of school, using data from last year with students. And it has been really, it's been really rewarding to see the progress that kids are making. And then that last box, I'm going to turn things over to Crystal Sullivan, because she is our ELA Curriculum Leader, and she's been really instrumental in continuing to grow our literacy intervention program. So I will turn things over to Crystal.
Alright, thank you. So if we think about, like, empowering learners, we know that, obviously, there's the universal support that all learners receive, but then also there's a need for tier-two targeted support. And as Michelle said, like, in math, we've grown this program, and we're also growing the literacy support program. So, in regards to kind of what we do here for the targeted support, tier-two targeted support for literacy, we focus, if you go to the next slide, we focus on like a cycle of collection, collecting data. I remember in 2019, I presented before the school committee, and we were just getting the literacy team and program started, and we've come really far in the last, the end of that school improvement plan, and then this school improvement plan. So, we have data collected from K to 8, and we use the Dibbles as a screening tool, and it gives us some data points about students' reading when it comes to their oral reading fluency, and also their silent reading comprehension. And from there, we, our response to the data has really grown. We're able to establish some groups, because we use spring data to schedule students and start in the fall. And then we also conduct the assessment school-wide, actually, well, district-wide, K to 8, but in the fall again, and we use that data and continue to schedule students for support that starts in October. Once we have that data, you can go to the next slide. We really have done a better job learning about how to dig deep into the data and conduct further assessments to really use that as what drives our focus of intervention. And then we implement the intervention. We use evidence-based programs. We're building our toolkit, phonics programs, fluency programs. We've started with a new program to us at the middle levels, Inspire, which was recently added as we saw the need that some of our students have to really learn an accelerated systematic phonics, like, instruction. So, that's one that we are excited to just kind of add to our toolkit. We continue to progress monitor in these intervention groups. We use Dibbles as a progress monitoring tool, and then that progress data can help us have like fluid and flexible groups, and it kind of completes the, like, whole circle, because after we progress monitor, we continue to use the screener in the next spring, and then kind of the cycle starts over again. So, I feel like our growth in this area is definitely to be noted. We, we have room to grow still, but we've come a long way since the start of the school improvement plan, so. Yep, thank you.
And these are just, again, some photos of kids with different kinds of groupings. Some students are leading discussions or leading a whole class lesson, but just the idea of students having more choice and more voice, being more active, and having some options. Our third goal for this school improvement plan is around fostering culturally responsive and inclusive classroom communities and school environments that provide equal access to learning for all students. And we, you know, are still working toward this goal. This year, some of our updates include, we have a culturally responsive PLC that is led by teachers and staff, and they're going to be leading the staff through some activities at a staff meeting that are connected to the ADL and the World of Difference. They're also sharing practices and materials with staff, so that's an active group, and it's been really helpful. Our World of Difference Peer Leaders is in year three here at Melican, and it has really just kind of become a part of the school culture and the way we do business. And that's really grown, and just watching our seventh and eighth graders really take on leadership roles is, is pretty, is pretty neat. So, we're excited about that. Our ELA teachers are engaged in curriculum review this year, as I mentioned, and one of the big focus areas is on identifying programs that really provide diverse tech and perspectives and expose students to opportunities for windows and mirrors experiences. And then finally, another highlight is our self-class, which Julie will talk about a little bit later. But there's a unit on bullying and harassment specifically, and there's a focus on discrimination, prejudice, and stereotypes. So it's a really, it's a really formal kind of way to get at some of that. And then again, just some more photos. Several of these are of students leading students in discussions about race and culture and differences and identity. And then there are a couple pictures of Julie and her self-class. And again, you know, just this idea of students having agency and students really, leading other students and leading important discussions with their peers. And then our fourth goal is around helping balance learners, and so the goal was to develop an implementable and systematic approach to social and emotional learning. And again, you know, just some highlights for this year. One of the things that we're really proud of is that last year, we started a Unified Basketball Team here at Melican. We know that Algonquin has several unified sports and other activities. And basi- unified basketball was just really, it was really great. The athletes, as well as the student coaches, just had a ball. It was a nice opportunity, and it was good team building and just nice, added a lot of spirit to school. This fall, we added Unified Bocce, so we are excited about collaborating and working with other middle schools in the area to add even more unified sports. We're really thankful that our PTO this year helped us with some jerseys that are specific to our unified team, so just really excited about that. This year, in the fall, our eighth graders took a trip to Boundless Adventures. Sixth grade took a trip there last spring, and they will do it again this spring. So, that is, those are going to be staple field trips, where every fall the eighth graders go, and every spring the sixth graders go, and it's nice for team building, and it's just a nice way to get kids outside and moving and taking risks, so we're excited about that. And I'm going to turn things over to Julie Moranci, because I know we've heard a lot about our self-class, which started last year, Social Emotional Learning Foundations, and it started last year as just a sixth-grade class. And this year, it is a class for all grades, so every student in all three grades has a self-class in their schedule once a week. And we are thrilled with the progress that we are making in this class, so I'll turn things over to Julie.
Thank you, and thank you for welcoming Crystal and I here tonight. So yes, self-class, it stands for Social Emotional Learning Foundations, and that is an actual sign there on my whiteboard. Caution adolescent brains under construction, because we know in middle school, it's a huge time of growth, not just in our bodies, but every part of us, our, our brains, our emotions. So, I like to remind students on a regular basis that there's a lot of growing happening during this time, and that we're there to support them. So, again, the class stands for Social Emotional Learning Foundations. It meets once a week, and all of our class units and lessons focus on the five key social-emotional learning areas, as outlined by Castle. And you can see what they are there: self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, responsible decision-making, and relationship skills. And these are life skills that everyone needs to have in order to be a good citizen, be a good partner, be a good friend, be a good coworker. And, you know, we believe here at Melican that it's important to really explicitly teach those skills to our students. At the beginning of the year, I defined those categories for the students and asked them, you know, what does that mean to you? Because it's important to me that, that all of these things are applicable to them in their real lives. So, if you look on the next couple of slides, these are our students' words, how those categories relate to them. And I won't go through all of them, but you can kind of see some of their answers on the next couple of slides, you know, what they think self-awareness means, what they mean it means to have, to have self-management. So these are our students' words, and we can just look through them quickly. But, they had a lot of great ideas, which was a great way to start the year. Don't litter, don't ditch people, right? Wake up when your alarm goes off. Be nice to your parents and siblings, right? We can go on to the next one. So, the main curriculum that we use for our self-class is the Second Step Middle School Curriculum, and it's my understanding that our elementary schools, if they're, they're in the process of also using this curriculum. So it would really be nice to have that consistency from, you know, kindergarten all the way up. But we're using that, sort of the backbone of our, our lessons. It is a Castle Select Program, which essentially means that Castle has designated it as like their highest distinction of being an effective, evidence-based SEL program. I also use Mind Up, which is another Castle Select Program. I used this a lot last year, also with my self-classes. It's a wonderful curriculum that really teaches students about their brain changes and really empowers them to understand what's happening in their brains. And with that awareness, I think, comes a lot of more ownership and empowerment, you know, for learning about our prefrontal cortex and how it's not totally developed yet, and that might be why we're making some big impulsive decisions, and our amygdala is in overdrive, you know? And it's so cool to hear our students using those words, but really knowing about the brain and about neuroplasticity, and it's just a cool way, this Mind Up program, I think, is wonderful. So I've been using that as well. So I won't go through all of the lessons, but the Second Step Program is divided up into four units, and the first one is mindsets and goals. Now each grade has their own specific lessons for each of these, but each of the three grades has mindsets and goals as their first. And I put a couple pictures in there. One of the ones with the, the speech bubbles were created by some sixth graders who did a project on fixed and growth mindset. And their job was to create scenarios where there was one person, or in some cases, dogs, who were discouraging the other ones to, you know, they're, you have a fixed mindset, you can't succeed, and, and they had to come up with definitions and solutions. And you can see on the next slideshow, there are some other examples. There's a dog who was at the dog park, and, you know, afraid to go down the slide, but the other dog says, you know, "You can't do that, you're a disgrace to dogs." And then he says, "I have a growth mindset," and the end of the story was wonderful. The dog went down the slide, it was a happy ending. I think the fish was telling the other fish he couldn't swim, and things like that. So, it was fun, they got to have fun and be creative, but they were also learning some great lessons about perseverance and how no one's born being good at something, that you really do have to try and practice and work at it. On the left there, our eighth graders were talking a lot about mindsets and applying them to their future selves. So they did two different identity maps. The one on top was the student currently, what their interests and strengths, and who they were, and what was important to them in their value system, and then talking about what they might look like 10 years from now. What, how could they use those strengths and interests to pursue their goals? And, you know, where would they be in 10 years? It's really fun to kind of think of our future, but also think, okay, what can I do in the meantime to get there? We did a lot of work on goal-setting and breaking down long-term goals into short-term goals. These are all really important skills that everybody should have. The next unit is recognizing bullying and harassment. Our eighth graders just finished this lesson, and our seventh and eighth, and sixth graders are in the midst of it now. And I think, you know, we, at Melican, this is such an important subject for us, and we really care a lot about having a safe community. And so I think it's wonderful that all of our students are getting lessons specifically about what is bullying, what is harassment. Our seventh and eighth graders were learning about sexual harassment and harassment based on race, religion, culture, how to identify that, how to report it, how to speak up. Our eighth graders just finished a public service announcement project that was the end of the bullying and harassment unit. And if you look on this slide here and the other slides, they were able to pick a specific kind of harassment and raise awareness about it. And it was pretty powerful, some of the things that they came up with. They got to choose whether they did a visual, public service announcement. Some of them chose to write and read it out loud, like they were on the radio, and they had to, you know, again, define a certain kind of harassment. They had to talk about what it was, how it affects people, who to report it to. And we also talked a lot about rights and responsibilities, and what our rights are as students, but also what our responsibilities are to be a part of a community. And Unit Three is Thoughts, Emotions, and Decisions. We just started this with our eighth graders, but this is really focusing about stress management and coping strategies, and reducing stress, and learning that, you know, all of our emotions are important and valid, and that it's okay to talk about them, and it's really important, actually, to do that, to develop those skills. And we just started with our eighth graders. We're talking about stress, and I interviewed some staff members to share their stress stories. So our eighth graders got to see some of our staff, including Crystal, talking about their own experiences with stress, which is really, I think, powerful for the students to hear, that their teachers have stress. Their teachers go through this too. And I asked our eighth graders to draw what stress looked like to them. And if you look on the next slide, it's pretty incredible, some of the ways that they describe stress. The one on the top left says, "Stress Black Hole," and it just, I think it shows us that our students are under some stress. They do need these strategies. This isn't just something that adults deal with. And the earlier we can teach them to manage those feelings, I think the better adults they'll be, the better they'll be able to handle stresses that come ahead in the future. Just some more. And then the last unit, which we'll do later in the year, is managing relationships and social conflict. And this is really talking about, you know, if you disagree with somebody, how can you do that in a healthy way? You know, how can we, you know, fight in a healthy way? How can we apologize and make amends and take ownership for our behavior? Which, again, at this age is not always easy, but that's what we'll be doing to, to end the school year together. And just a couple other things, what we do in self-class. We start every class with a starter question, and it's maybe hard to see those, but I come up with a question that is a personal question, and the students go up on the board, they know to come in and put their answer, their magnet on the board where they fit, and it gives us some time to share and have some talking points. If you look on the top left, it says, "What time did you fall asleep last night?" And the scale went from 8:00 PM earlier to 3:00 in the morning or later. And as you can see, there are magnets all across that scale. And then we have opportunities to share. The nice thing about the starter is that, you know, I can have a conversation with students about sleep and sleep habits without sitting down and like lecturing them about it. We'll just talk about, well, what, how, how much sleep do you think you need? You know, and, and it's, it's a good way for them to just listen to each other. The starter's a great way for kids who may be reluctant to speak, to just go up and have their voice be heard. And then the last thing we do every day is a daily dedication, and that is when students choose someone that they really care about, whether it's somebody in their family, or their pet, or a celebrity, who means something to them and who has influenced them in some way. And they get to volunteer each week to go up and just say, "This is why this person is important to me." And it's probably my favorite, favorite part of class, because when students get up and share about themselves, it's really, a lot of really community-building. We've had students talk about family members who have died, or, you know, people that they really admire, and it's just really cool to, to let them listen to each other and get to know them on a more personal level. And I'm working closely with our health teacher, Sandy Arena, to create a rich and comprehensive wellness program for our students. It's important to us that we're aligned with our MMS School Improvement Plan, our District Strategic Plan, and the 2023 Mass Curriculum Framework, which just came out last, last spring or last fall. And I just want to say, I appreciate, you know, working in a school like Melican that really values mental health and wellness, and that as a school counselor, I can have these kind of conversations with all of our students, not just a select few. I think that's really important. So, thank you to the, to the school committee for all the ongoing support as well. Thank you. And again, just some pictures connected to the, this goal. There are, there's one from Boundless Adventures. There are a couple from Julie's self-classroom. There are just a lot of different kinds of ways, I think, that we promote healthy and balanced learners. And then our last, our last goal is around increasing curriculum leaders and team leaders' capacity to improve teaching and learning. And one of the reasons that I asked Julie and Crystal to be here is because they are teacher leaders. And I do believe that strong teacher leadership is what leads to school improvement. And so it's really nice to turn things over to them and, and kind of see what they do. Crystal's been instrumental in our literacy intervention program. We've just made a lot of progress in that area. And Julie with her self-class. So that's why I asked them to be here. And then, you know, again, just some updates. And one exciting update in the top right is around instructional rounds. So several of our curriculum leaders, including Crystal, had an opportunity to go to Harvard on Monday. And then today, we had instructional rounds visits here where students from Harvard, from the Institute came and, and got into some classrooms. So we're excited about looking at feedback and using that to make, to create some new goals for our next improvement plan. And then the second one talks about some of our ELA teachers on their own decided to do some co-teaching this year as a way to support one another in taking some risks specifically around implementing some UDL strategies and providing students with some choices. And then, you know, one of the other exciting things that is happening, we have after-school PLCs and they are led by teachers, for the most part, curriculum leaders and team leaders. And a lot of good work is going on there. And then finally, at the bottom, just some reference to bringing back our overnight sixth grade trip, as well as some other field trips and just teachers really taking the initiative in bringing back field trips and really making important connections to, to our curriculum. And again, just some pictures of teachers working together. Yep, there's one. And then, you know, I just like this quote. I do believe that any real change happens one step at a time. And we are excited about the progress that we've made and the growth we've made regarding this school improvement plan. There's, there are a lot more days left in this year. We're excited to continue to work towards those goals. And we are thinking about our next school improvement plan.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the presentation tonight, all of the information. There's so much of it. I have to say, self, Erin used to, last year, she sat up here, I mean, and just went on and on about self and she couldn't get enough in. And, you know, not having a kid at the middle school, I was just like, okay, yeah, okay. Now that I have a daughter in middle school, I hear about self too, all the time. Love, it's one of the favorite classes, which is important because those are the life lessons that the kids are actually learning and going to be carrying on. So I'm excited that our district has that part of our curriculum and that you guys are doing it, doing a great job of it too.
Do you have anything? I'll start, do you want me to start with?
It's kind of a lot to try and like.
I know, to try to like, I, I know.
Ask, I'm not sure what the right question back would be. I mean, I, I think the more times we can allow children the opportunities to reframe and readdress and kind of come back in a calm and collected space to then approach the problems and the challenges of the day, then we're doing some good. So I'd love it, yeah. Thanks, I don't have it, sorry.
Great. Kristin, Lauren, Joan? Joan?
I'll say Joan will have, Joan will have some good, Joan will have some good questions too. So I'll, I'll learn, I'll learn from Joan.
Do you want me to go ahead with my two questions I have, Kelly?
That'd be great, thanks Joan.
Okay. Bryce, you're doing a great job. You don't have to learn from me. I learned from you. Michelle, thank you very much for this presentation on your school improvement plan. I have two questions on, the first one is on Goal One and then Goal Two. In Goal One, you were talking about the digital literacy computer standards. And you mentioned the weekly DLCS class. Can you just give a little more detail what happens in that class?
Sure. So yeah, that is a class that we added to the schedule this year just for sixth graders. So the instructional tech specialist is the professional that is teaching that class. So I can give an example, when I was in last week, all students were learning how to create a spreadsheet and, and manipulate the spreadsheet and work with a partner to kind of understand different ways that they could use spreadsheets. And it was really empowering for them because I think, you know, I think a lot of adults have trouble manipulating and navigating spreadsheets. So that's like a really tangible sort of an example that is embedded in those standards, the digital literacy and computer science standards. So that is, that is one thing. They have done some work on like internet safety and just sort of being a, a positive digital citizen as well. So it addresses those specific standards in ways that are engaging for sixth graders and give them opportunities to collaborate because part of those standards is around collaborating in a digital way. So it is just a very targeted way to teach those standards. A lot of what we do is embed those standards in our content areas, or science, for example. That is where they would probably use a spreadsheet, for example. But in this particular case, kids are getting some exposure to it and learning about it as a separate sort of a skill. And then they will be able to apply it in other classes. So we're trying to do a little bit of both, where they get specific lessons regarding those standards. And then there's other times when those are embedded in the classroom and the instructional tech specialists may go in and co-teach, for example, with a science teacher. Or the science teacher may use the DLCS toolbox and come up with a lesson about how he or she can, can teach a skill. So I hope that, does that make some sense? Sorry, you're not, you're not in person, it's a little harder.
Yeah, it does, because, you know, the kids know how to operate the computer and they have, know how to operate their different programs on their phones. But learning, you know, the different safety, internet safety, and also, you know, the data, data sheets, that's something they can probably go home and teach to their parents. So thank you very much for giving more information on that.
Sure.
The other question I had on Goal Two, which I really liked, is hearing the, the staff from, Melikin was working in collaboration with the staff in Trotier on the ELA. What type of things are they working on together?
So there's an ELA Curriculum Council now that is in place. Crystal is on it. So there are staff members from both Trotier and Melikin, ELA staff members. Again, this group and administrators is led by Megan Kelty, our ELA coordinator. And we are examining curriculum materials, similar to the way we did with math, worked with Trotier, to examine curriculum materials. Now we are implementing Carnegie. So we are hoping to come up with some new ELA curriculum materials that we will implement in the near future. So we are meeting regularly, we are examining materials, we are hearing from representatives from different companies about resources that are out there. And so we're collaborating in that way.
I mean, that's wonderful. I think, you know, teachers always need that time to share ideas and to collaborate together. So that's really wonderful. The last question I have is, I really loved your last slide that you talked about. You're, you're excited for the progress and you have to take one step at one time. I think, as Kelly and Bryce said, the kudos on that self-class that you have. Because I think you mentioned at the beginning that you started with one grade level. And this year, it's with all grade levels. So congratulations on that. I think it's fabulous. One question is, we haven't elongated this school day. Where have you found the time to get another class in? Is it passing one that you've eliminated? What is it?
Well, we have a schedule, it's a good point. I mean, you keep adding, right? But we don't have more time. You're, you're right. So our class schedule on four days is a little bit different than on a, on a fifth day, where our classes are a little bit longer on that fifth day and a little bit shorter on those other four days. So our class size, our class length is about 45 minutes typically, except on that day where they're a little bit longer and they're closer to 48 minutes. So you're right, there's not enough time in the day, but we were able to squeeze that in.
Okay, thank you. And one last thing, when you have your next school council meeting, please give my kudos to all the members, the community members, the staff members, the parents, and everybody who works on the school improvement plan and your administration. So thank you very much.
Thanks Joan.
So two things that, that sparked for Joan, yeah, that schedule, that Wednesday? I've asked Addie, I'm like, what, what, why is Wednesday's days different? She's clueless to it. She's like, I don't know. She's like, it's not different. I was like, it is different though. I see the picture, like different, it looks different. So it's not, because I was like, I didn't know if it was for, it's just to get the extra minutes in?
Yep, so.
Because I didn't know if it was for like, you know, if you have assemblies or something like, that's like, it's just.
It's just that day we're able to have classes be a little bit longer.
Okay.
Yeah.
What else? Joan just said something else that maybe sparked. Joan, what was the last thing you said?
She thanked people for the school improvement plan.
Oh, the school improvement plan, yes. Is the, the school?
Council.
Council, yeah. Is there full in Melikin?
No, would you like to join?
No, I would not, uh, no. No, somebody was asking me who was on it and I was like, I'm not sure what positions are open or if there's not.
Yeah, we had one meeting and we didn't have too many people come, so we will put it out there again and hopefully we'll get some more people.
Okay, so in like the newsletter or something to?
It'll be in the Monday memo also.
Okay, perfect. Kristin or Lauren? I don't hear any dings, so we're good to move on? Okay, alright, sounds good. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. And it looks like the PTO has arrived.
Ten minutes early.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Crystal. Stay with me, Michelle.
I'll stay up here with you.
But I'll let you sit over here.
Boy.
I'll drive for you.
You made it just in time. No, it's perfect.
I was like, yeah, I'll be there seven.
Spend a day, spend a day.
Hi, everybody. I'm Jen Kenny, President of Melikin's PTO. I will tell you what we've been up to this year. Okay, so this is our board. Kelly is on it with me. I always rope her into every PTO that I'm on. We have Nancy Dennehy as our treasurer, she's been wonderful. And our secretary is Hanya Sustash, missing that?
Sustash.
Sustash. And she's been wonderful as well. We have a lot of other parents too that aren't in the executive board, but we, I was, it's been amazing to see how many are stepping up to help out. Because when I came on, I feel like the PTO needed a little bit of rebuilding. And so just with some good word of mouth, we've had a lot of parents want to help and put in a lot of effort. So this is our budget slide. I don't know if you can see it too well, but the biggest chunk is our scholarships, our field trip and scholarships portion. That's where we put a lot of our money. So this year, because the sixth grade came back with their overnight trip, a lot of that is from there. I think there was 12 scholars, does that, does that sound right? Okay, maybe even more, but at least 12 scholarships. So that's accounting for a big chunk of our money. And then the rest are, I'm leaning over here for a second. Enrichments, teacher grants, teacher grants, enrichments are two that are super important to me because I think it's important for the teachers to be able to add stuff to their classrooms, to make it easier for them to offer what they need to, to the students. And enrichments, just make middle school fun, because middle school is tough sometimes for the kids. So it's nice to bring in some outside programs. And then we have clubs and sports, which I think there was maybe a conversation, I know we haven't gone into it too far, but maybe revisiting some of the funds and where that's used, maybe from other budgets, if that's possible at all. But we also have the Road Runner Raffle, which, do you want to talk about that a little bit? Do you guys know what that, the Road Runner Raffle is? It's like a monthly?
So we started something very similar, I don't know, probably 10 years ago now, but teachers and any staff can give out Road Runner Raffle tickets to a student for like doing a good deed, for helping somebody, for, you know, going above and beyond, for whatever. So we really revamped that this year. And we have like, you know, different, different prizes. I think the PTO has been really instrumental in getting us some different prizes. So once a month, we draw out the raffle tickets, three per grade, and kids can choose a different kind of a prize. Additionally, we are saving up all the likes, the little stubs. And whichever grade gets the most by the end of the year will get some kind of a prize. So we've tried to really like revive that a little bit and get the kids excited about it, and they are excited about it.
They are, the visual is really cool. We saw that, we saw the tubes. It's like the big tubes, you can see them in the window downstairs in the office, so you can see what grade.
The rolly thing for the raffles.
Yeah, the rolly thing for the raffles, yeah. So it's really cool. So we're happy to be a part of that. I mean, we put in Starbucks gift cards, I think the most popular. Muya coupons, all kinds of stuff to the kids.
Skip the line at lunch.
Oh yeah, we made like our Corinne Frick, and apparently she made these really cool coupons, skip the line, a couple other things, or extra time with the dogs if they're in or something.
Time on the elevator.
Yeah, elevator, things that you don't, you know, but free to us, but the kids get excited, so perfect. So that's really fun. And then, oh, the eighth grade, there's a chunk in there for eighth grade events too, because there's, we do a lot, we try to make eighth grade fun at Melikin. So there's like their dance, there's Field Day. What else am I missing that they do towards the end of the year?
Those are the big ones. The Field Day and then the, the farewell dance and graduation.
Okay, so we help with, to make that special for them. Any, any questions on our budget or anything on where? Fundraising, so this is where we're really trying to, we come up with, trying to come up with new ideas each time. So Spirit Ware, we're excited to maybe revamp that a little bit. Maybe we'll push it to, the fifth graders coming in too, make it exciting. Maybe we can work with administration for Spirit Days, so we can say, hey, do you not, do you need new Melikin swag? And that ends up being a fundraiser as well. Fun Nights, we added a few this year, which the kids got excited about. We weren't sure would they want to go, are they interested? But I think a lot of them from COVID missed out on so many things that they're like, yeah, I'll hang out for a night, a couple hours with my friends. So they went, they went okay, right? They went well.
What do you do at a fun night?
So there's the gym.
No fun allowed.
Just fun, the whole time. It's two hours on a Friday night.
The parents drop you off.
The parents drop off, yes, which they think is wonderful. That's the fun part for the parents. You, you buy a ticket, it's like 10 bucks, something like that. And there's snacks that they can purchase, drinks, and then in the cafeteria is a DJ with dancing. And in the gym, you can play basketball, they set up the volleyball net. And it's kind of, you know, mill around, hang out.
Just a lot of fun, dancing, running around and eating a lot of candy.
Right, yeah, I went to both of them and it was very stimulating for me, but the kids had a blast and, you know, I slept great and they slept great. So it was, it was good, it was fun to see them. You know, it doesn't have to be just a dance, you don't have to feel uncomfortable if that's not your thing, but you can dance if you want to, but if not, you might just be hanging out in the gym playing basketball or something. So those are great. The Color Run, we did last year for the first time. I know Greg came, Kelly came, that was fun, we're going to do that again. So you can come again if you want, Greg.
I'll be there.
If you want to be in the dunk tank, I can put you on the list. No, we're trying, we're going to maybe do it a little bit differently this year too, do it during the school day so that everybody can be a part of it, but still have it be some sort of fundraiser. It was really fun.
Um, it was really fun. It was something that we've never done before, I don't think, in, in any of the Northborough schools. So it was something different. And that's gonna be in June. Then we obviously have the textile bins, which I think Melican does the best out of a lot of the school. So we, we try to push those. So that's going well. We did a no fuss fundraiser this year, which was basically, you know, we sent home a piece of paper and just said, if you paid, if you donate, um, 35 per student, if everybody did that, we would raise, you know, X amount of money. So we thought, you don't have to sell anything, you know, to knock on, bother families with, you know, wrapping paper. And it went okay, not as great as we had hoped, but, um, it may have just not been the year for something like that. So we're hoping to bring in some more with the color run. Um, we might look at other fundraisers if we need to. The, the fun nights end up bringing in some money, too, that ends up being a fun, uh, fundraiser. And then this year, for the first time, I don't think, uh, last year we did for the color run, but I don't know that Melican has reached out much to local businesses. And we got a great response from that. We had a lot of local businesses wanting to help, so just kind of sponsor the PTO. We let them know things that we do. We, for the kids throughout the year, where that money goes, we have social media pages that we highlight the businesses on, depending on how much money they donate. There's different tiers, so trying to help them, because they're helping us. So that's been, um, that's been really helpful. Grants. So these are some of the grants that we approved this year. And, um, there was some really fun stuff. So sixth grade, I thought it was cute. She's adding a sewing component to the art class, so I thought that was fun. And then some of ours, a world of difference, seventh and eighth graders do that, right? Okay, isn't that fairly new? Is that a fairly new?
I think that supplies for the world of difference peer leaders, so like just some of the supplies that they need. Yeah, this is our third year doing it.
Third year doing, okay. And then eighth grade fund stations for the end of the year. They're gonna have some special stuff for them, so just some supplies for that, some magazines. Um, we had the math teachers ask for some more standing desks, so that seems to be something that they needed, so we were happy to do that. We always love to help with Model UN, um, special ed, eighth grade, one of these, they're, I guess they're pretty big, kind of white books to use in the classrooms, uh, some summer reading books. So I don't, and then obviously the sixth grade. So in addition to helping with the scholarships for families in need for the sixth grade, the PTO also gave a portion of money to help offset the cost, bring it down a little bit, which, um, which is under our, our grants. And so I think we're still waiting for some to come in, but I don't know if you have any feedback for any of the grants?
No, I think people are just really appreciative.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Um, we also love pictures. If there's ever pictures of things they use as a parent, like, you know, then they can see, oh, that's where my money went. So I meant to say that. Send anything along that you might have, that's okay to share. Um, enrichments and clubs. So we bring in some world dancers. And this year, we actually added for seventh grade, too. So last year, I think it was just eighth grade.
Yes.
So now they're coming for seventh graders. So these, these, this company comes in and teaches them different.
Latin dance.
Yeah, and the kids get to get up and do it, and so it's kind of fun. Cherry the Sun, he's come a bunch of times, I believe. And he's kind of a Greek mythology.
Yep, he's a one man show.
One man show.
Very engaging.
Yep, entertained. The kids seem to like that. Um, we're hoping to do dialed action sports, which you, Greg, if you're available to come, let you, let you know what it is. It's super fun. It's these guys that come in on VMX bikes and they give a message. And we can, we choose which one. So I think one was like drugs, one's around bullying. Oh, you want to, you lay down, they're gonna jump over you.
You don't get to ride the bike, Keith.
You don't get to ride.
And no dunk.
No dunk, no. You can stay dry for this. But it's cool. They, they, they really hook the kids, because they're doing these really cool, fun tricks, but then they throw in messages about bullying and drugs. And so we're trying to, maybe may finalize a date for that. Um, and then we helped out with the Nintendo Club, Craft Club, Math Club, which I saw was highlighted in one of the, uh, weekly newsletters, and the Saga Club as well. And then we do some sponsored events, so we like to do special things for the staff. So welcome back in, end of August, right when they come back, something around the holidays before we go on break in December. Um, there's a week in May, Teacher Appreciation Week. We try to do some fun things. Again, the Road Runner Raffle, and then the eighth grade events. And that, I think, is, that's it.
Been really great, really helpful in sort of reviving, um, helping us revive our PTO. And, um, it's just been really refreshing. And, um, certainly everybody, Kelly included, um, everybody on the board really works hard, and the other parents who chip in as well. So, um, it's just nice.
And Michelle's being really patient with us, because we, like your quote, baby step, or one step at a time, whatever the steps quote was, that's us, because we did.
Jen Lynn sends all these questions and I'm like, oh, man.
We changed a lot. We changed a lot on her and Jen Callahan last year, because we became nonprofit status. So there was a lot of different rules we had to follow. So we threw a lot at them. And so they're, they're working.
It's good. It's a good change.
It's a great, yeah, it's a great change, but it's a little bit of adjustment for everybody.
But that's what we're up to, so.
Thank you so much for presenting tonight. I appreciate it. Appreciate coming in and appreciate all that the PTO is due for the schools. Uh, Joan, do you have anything? Or Kristen or Lauren? Joan?
Yes, I'd like to thank Jenny from the, uh, for everything that, and please take it back to the board. Uh, besides all the enrichment program and clubs, what you have, uh, what you have sponsored through the grants and have awarded the money to is so helpful to the school and the students, but even helpful to us as we go into our operational budget. But I'd just like to highlight some of the, out of 11 grants, they're all just wonderful, but ones that really are, are so pertinent is the Model UN, because that will follow those students into, uh, the high school where we have a Model UN. I think the six standing desks, which are great, where some students, uh, as we know, can learn better uh, from different sitting apparatus than just a chair. And maybe that is even for a teacher. And the sports equipment and uniforms. I'm so pleased to see the number of sports, as Michelle mentioned, the unified sports from the sports program, how it began with just basketball back in the 90s at the middle school. And now we go to unified sports and the PTO is sponsoring sports equipment and uniforms. So thank you very much, because if there is a dollar number to that, uh, the public of Northborough and the voters need to know how much you are giving back to the community and also to the school. So thank you for your financial support, which makes our job a little bit easier as we go into the budget season. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Kristen?
I'm stacking a lot of what Joan said. Um, it does make it a lot easier for the teachers. And I remember that basketball program when it started. And I'm so glad to see the focus on like universal and equity and, you know, unified sports now, that wasn't there back in the 90s. Um, so thank you a lot for all your, your hard work. I know it's a lot on top of, I'm sure all of you have very full lives otherwise as well.
Thank you.
And then, on behalf of the district, I just want to thank you for all the efforts. Um, you do make a positive impact on what our students experience. And we appreciate your bringing new life to the Melican PTO and pushing the envelope. Um, and I think it's, it's really exciting to see. Um, and we're always grateful for all the PTOs in Northborough supporting the work that we do with kids and supporting teachers. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And thanks, Kelly, for joining.
Yeah, thanks, Jen, for asking. I appreciate it.
And I'm not sure if we mentioned, mentioned it, there is a open position on your site council. Michelle, is that correct?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, Jen, if you want to just.
Just add another.
Just add it on.
Suzie aware of that?
Who do you think's the one who asked me who was on it?
I was gonna say, who was the one who asked?
Suzie's gonna join us?
Uh, she's, yeah, she's on the, she's on the Proctor wing.
Great, I already emailed her. Love it.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll let her know. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you both coming in tonight. Moving on to legislative update.
So just a quick update, the select board hosts the legislative delegation for Northborough. Um, we received in some, a communication from, um, the town administrator around what priorities the school committee has in terms of legislation. So I did submit, um, several priorities. One is, um, special education reimbursement, which is always a priority for our district. Um, connected to that is also regional transportation reimbursement, although it doesn't necessarily directly impact, um, Northborough district. It does have a waterfall effect on the funds that the regional, um, system receives. Also, with the governor's budget, um, looking at the, um, minimum local, um, per people increase, so from $30 to $60. And then lastly, lifting, uh, lifting the cap of MSBA, uh, funds that the state applies to accelerated repair, uh, projects and core building programs. So those are the, that, that's the information I requested be added to their summary sheet that they provide, the legislative delegation.
So no questions? We'll move on to the recommended budget presentation for fiscal year 2025.
So Keith, I send you the link. It would be best if you presented it, Jared.
Sure.
Oh, I got a cushion one.
Oh, you got a good one?
There's a cushion one over there. It's a little better, the cushion.
Yes.
Breaks the other one.
All right, it's been almost a month since, um, we presented the revised preliminary budget to the committee. Um, that was on January 3rd. It's hard to believe it is February 7th. Um, and this evening, I will present the FY25 recommended budget. I will share that, um, a tremendous amount of work has been accomplished since, um, the last presentation. Um, the finance department, principals, um, met and really fine tuned and had conversations around, again, what we hope to accomplish through the FY25 budget. Um, and we fine tuned some of, of our thinking, um, although it hasn't changed the percent increase to the budget that was presented in January. So next slide. So as you know, we always, um, think about what goals we're trying to accomplish with the, uh, upcoming fiscal year budget. So we always think about our mission, which is educate, inspire, and challenge, and really thinking about our vision, um, of what we want our students to be. So what knowledge and skills will they need to be successful at the next grade level, the next school, or beyond, um, high school? Next slide. Um, so the budget is, is just that it's a process. So it's hard to believe it's been six months of work to get to this point. Um, so there have been a lot of meetings, a lot of input from faculty and staff, principals, um, from district leaders and the school committee to get to a recommended budget. So after this evening, if we have a successful vote from the school committee, then the next milestone really is, um, the Northborough Town Meeting. I have not, um, received notification yet of when the school district will present to the town boards and committees, but I anticipate that, or we'll share in short.
They're gonna do, they're not gonna forego that this year, right? We have to.
I believe, I, I believe they are going to have, um, us meet with boards and committees. So next slide. So again, this is a goal-driven budget process. So the school committee's budget priorities are essential in terms of really thinking about what we want to accomplish. In addition to the school committee's budget priorities, we also use our strategic plan and the five strategic objectives to really drive our budget conversations and make sure we're taking steps toward achieving the goals that we've set out. Next slide. Next slide. Um, budget impact. So each year, as we begin the budget process, we always talk about what we think are going to be the greatest impacts to, um, the upcoming year. Um, so general education, transportation, we added that as a, um, potential impact. However, the school committee did vote to extend our contract with NRT one more year, so that, um, did not have the impact that we thought it could have if we went out to bid. Um, supplies and material costs, so again, we are still feeling the impact of, um, the pandemic and inflation. So there are supplies and material costs that are greater than what we'd expect, uh, post, uh, pre-pandemic, um, but it is moderating. And then textbooks and instructional software are just curriculum materials. Um, we are continuing to invest in our tools and resources to educate students, so that is a budget impact. And then lastly, at the end of, um, this year, end of '24, the district is required to phase out ESAR funds. The finance department and schools have done an excellent job of using ESAR funds. Um, and to, to try not to create a structural deficit in the budget through those funds. We have not added positions using ESAR funding. However, we did move supplies, materials, and, um, technology onto it. And now we need to move that back to the budget, and that is having an impact on the overall budget for FY25. Excellent. Um, FY24 expenses, um, that we did use ESAR funds. So we've gone over this several times. Just some examples are the elementary math curriculum, screening tools, um, the ELK curriculum. So the total amount, um, in the FY24 budget, um, that was funded through ESAR was $173,157. And in the FY25 budget, we needed to move that back to, um, FY25 budget. So that's about a half a percent, um, in addition to the FY25 budget that I'm presenting. So where we are today, um, so we started the budget process, um, initial budget requests to preliminary budgets to, um, the revised preliminary. And this evening, we're presenting a superintendent's recommended budget, um, totaling $29,119,597, um, which is a 3.99% increase over fiscal year '24. Excellent. So in terms of budget priorities, I think it's always important to talk about, um, what was asked for in the FY25 budget. Um, there are many asks in terms of, uh, positions. Um, there were 13.9 positions that were requested throughout the budget process. Um, and just highlighting some that, um, we were able to make progress toward are the, um, math positions at the elementary level, which we'll talk more about, reestablishing a fifth grade strings program. The other positions that are listed, um, are not included in the recommended budget.
So the green?
The green is.
Made it on, and all the white we still are working on.
The white, um, it is not included, correct. Next slide. Um, so proposed positions and projected costs, again, so the adaptive physical education teacher. So this is a shared position across Southborough and the region. So, um, the .08 is Northborough's portion of that position, so that is included in the budget. Also included in the budget are two, um, education support professionals to meet the needs of the students that we will be educating in, uh, the fall. Um, also, a special education teacher, so, um, having a, a special education teacher kind of support our castle, uh, program. So looking at our students and in the castle program and making sure they have the required supports. And then the total, um, of all of the requests, um, is, that's 10.88. And the total request between school committee, principals, and the district is 24.78. If we were to add all of those positions, it would be over $1.7 million added to the budget. Um, that is not feasible, uh, from a fiscal perspective. Um, and we have created a five-year plan that we'll be working toward to create, uh, the key positions that, um, we've identified. Budget offsets, so, um, we always look at offsetting the budget. Um, so FY24 circuit breaker, special education reimbursement offset, um, the total, uh, offset is a little over a million dollars. Um, we receive circuit breaker, special education transportation reimbursement. That's not changed from the preliminary budget. That's a little under $170,000. And then potential retirements and leave of absences. So January 15th is the, the deadline for teachers to let us know they'll be retiring. So we have a firm number of leave of absences and retirements. Uh, that is, uh, offset of a little over $250,000. So, um, the significant budget offsets, uh, presented in the recommend, recommended budget are a little, um, under $1.5 million. So the, again, the FY25 recom, recommended budget, um, totals $29,119,597. Um, it is, uh, $1,118,370 more than FY24 budget, and it reflects a 3.99% increase over fiscal year '24. So what is included in this recommended budget? Um, so we have many of our, uh, curriculum resources and supplies, so wit and wisdom, digital licenses. Um, we are looking to add a middle school ELA curriculum to align with our K through five curriculum in ELA. Um, envision, envision an ST math, K-5 curriculum. We have middle school social studies and science curriculum, um, continuing with our second step SEL program, um, continuing with Carnegie Math, our middle school math curriculum. And then also, um, funding our hardware replacement cycle and device, um, replacement plan. Um, so those are included in, in the budget, and that, uh, those items total $270,778. So also, other materials, um, and personnel that are included. So, um, we did ha, add a, um, 1.0 position. Um, we were thinking a health or a math educator at the elementary level. We've had many conversations with the principals. And, um, where we, um, landed in terms of the budget is adding two math interventionists that will be shared between, uh, the four elementary schools. Um, and their primary responsibility will be to work, um, with students who need intervention in mathematics. Um, we talked about the special education teacher. Um, we have one ESP position. Um, ELA coordinator moved, um, back to the budget that was on SO3. Um, we have the middle school strings, uh, program, $50,000. Um, so we are working with, um, Principal Carb and the music educators at Melican to really think about, um, you know, what could a mu, a music program look like, um, how to support that. Human resource information system, again, across our three districts. Human resource information system, again, across our three districts, we have, uh, over a hundred, eight hundred employees, and an HRIS system will allow us to become more efficient in terms of, uh, the paper, paperwork and workflows. And then lastly, the point zero eight adaptive PE teacher, um, which is Northborough's portion. So the, the total cost is two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars. Next slide.
Is the adaptive, um, phys, uh, teacher, is that for all five schools? Like Mellican, K through E?
All ten schools.
All ten schools, so both, okay, so it's one person in there.
Yeah. And then I shared, we shared this, um, throughout our, uh, budget presentations, the historical budget increases compared to inflation. Um, so you can see that, you know, I think, um, inflation had a great impact, um, in fiscal year twenty-one and twenty-two. Um, FY twenty-three thankfully, it, um, moderated. We are seeing inflation, um, actually stabilize. Um, but I s- still think there is some recovery in terms of overall budget, um, from fiscal year twenty-one, where it was a one percent increase, and fiscal year twenty-two where it was, um, almost a little over two percent increase. Um, so, again, the budget that, um, I am recommending, I would classify or categorize as a level services budget with inter- integral, uh, with, um.
Incremental.
Thank you. Incremental, um, growth areas, um, in terms of, uh, math interventionists, um, and also the strings program at the middle school, uh, but for the most part, it's maintaining the level of services, um, that we're providing in fiscal year twenty-four. Excellent.
Kind of a live on team, so they can help you when I have word retrieval issues.
That's the last slide.
That's it.
All right, so I, we'd be happy to answer any questions the committee may have.
That's great. Um, you guys have all done it, tons of work behind the scenes. The committee, we've, you know, been working on this, you know, for, um, updates throughout the year so far. Um, so it's, nothing's new that we're hearing tonight. Um, but it always amazes me how you are able to get the most out of the numbers that were dealt with. So I thank you and everybody for the hard work to, um, achieving, you know, some of our goals. Not all of them, but we've got a timetable for them all, so that's good, we're in the right direction. Um, Joan, do you have any questions?
Uh, no questions, but I'm ready to make a motion.
Whoa, okay. You can make a motion, and then we'll have discussion.
Okay, um, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the FY twenty-five recommended budget for the Northborough K to eight schools in the amount of twenty-nine million dollars, one hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred ninety-seven dollars, which represents a three-point-nine-nine percent increase from, uh, the previous year FY twenty-four. And the budget increase, uh, from, in dollar amount from FY twenty-four is in the amount of one million, one hundred and eighteen dollars, thousand dollars, uh, let me do it again, one million, one hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars.
Second.
Motion by Joan, seconded by Bryce, discussion? Kristen, Lauren, Lauren.
Thank you, um, so I forget who said it, I think it was Kelly, um, I know that this is, uh, uh, pretty much the same presentation as last month, um, but I do want to reiterate, um, that I do appreciate the district and the school committee working together to create a priority list, um, of sort of the next few years and where we want to see growth, um, and I think that that was really instrumental in our decision-making this year. Um, and I always have to, um, talk about music, so I'm very happy to see that there's, um, progress in the strings program as well. Um, so thank you.
Uh, so we have a motion in a second, we've heard discussion, uh, we are gonna take a roll call vote. Kristen?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Myself is a yes, so it passes unanimously.
And not that it's a race, but Northborough is the first district to pass its budget.
It's always a race, and yes, we are.
I just wanted, um, to thank Becky and the finance department for all, all of the hard work.
Yes, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Amazing.
It's a lot of work, and we have a great team managing it.
So great. Alrighty. Fun topic, lunch prices increase.
Yes, so, um, and enclosed in your packet is a memo from me outlining, uh, the purpose, uh, for this increase. Um, this increase is due to a compliance issue that was, um, required by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for all schools that participate in the National School Lunch Program. Um, we have been, um, very conservative over the years with our lunch prices, and we remain them, um, pretty steady, uh, for a very, very long time, and especially while we were waiting for the decision to allow universal free, free lunches. We wanted to maintain that, and I remember that as part of my last presentation about the topic. Uh, but it did come out in, um, late August that in order for compliance to be met, uh, school districts had to bring their second meal prices and their adult meal prices up to a minimum level. And it is outlined, uh, in the, um, in the memo that I sent to Greg, that the reimbursement rate of, uh, three dollars and eighty-five cents, uh, for the student meals, and a minimum of four dollars and sixty-six, sixty-seven cents, uh, for adult meals would, would be what would be required. So, uh, the recommendation I'm making this evening is to adjust the second meal price from three dollars and twenty-five cents to three dollars and eighty-five cents to meet that compliance, as well as for the adult meal price to go from four dollars and ten cents to four dollars and seventy cents. And what I can say, and I want to remind the committee of, is that these are the second meals that students would be purchasing, um, in the event that they, they chose to do so. So all first meals are one-hundred percent free, and the intention is that that is gonna be, um, the indefinite, uh, situation. Uh, but for anyone that purchases a second meal, this would be the charge that would be rendered. With your approval. Bryce?
Just clarify, three-twenty-five to three-eighty-five, or three-eighty-five to four-thirty-five?
From three-twenty-five to three-eighty-five for the student second meal price?
I thought, okay, I, I'm sorry, I thought we had reviewed something that articulated that four-thirty-five was the baseline for student, uh, reimbursements.
Was that like the one that we were gonna do before lunch, for first lunches?
Is that not, is that not?
That's not the adjusted amount, that's the, what is that, the four-thirty, what's that?
That's the reimbursement.
That's the reimbursement, but we're able to bring down, uh, that rate, what is that figure? Um.
The forty-five cents?
Forty-five cents.
Yep.
Yeah, I've got it here, Greg. That's the, that's the adjustment that was specified in the memo that would be allowed, I don't quite know exactly what that's for.
But just to clarify, we are re- be, we are being reimbursed for a, an initial meal.
Yes.
Combined from the state and federal equals four dollars and thirty-five cents per meal.
Yes.
Okay, and so what we're saying is our second meal choice cost, or a price to the student was three dollars and twenty-five cents, and we're gonna move that to three dollars and eighty-five cents.
Correct.
Okay, I'm sure there's lots of good arguments for not getting up to four-thirty-five on that, um, which I would be more than probably persuaded by, so, okay. But my question to you on the adult meal is, why stop there?
You mean my, why not make it five dollars type thing?
Well, look, I mean, I don't think you sell a lot of them in the first place.
We do not.
Right, so like, who are you inconveniencing by going to a relatively reasonable price? And then working up to an extent where people would buy it? So I guess I'm just wondering, like, how many times do we have to come back to a place where, like, the difference for an, an adult in the world to buy lunch for six dollars or four dollars and, sorry, uh, not the, the detail on the, on the pennies there, but like, I do think it begins to set the expectation that it is food worth adults buying at still an incredibly good value. And so I know even when we were in Concord, I believe it is six now, we were at five four years ago. And the idea was that we were then gonna compete to make that really worth it for a staff member. So it shifted from being, this is cheap and they'll get it if they want it.
Yeah.
To it's still pretty darn cheap, but we're gonna perform up to an elevated standard because we are gonna ask them to pay more. So I guess I'm just curious, like, why stop, given you're not really selling many anyways? I don't think you're gonna encourage, you're not, you're not grabbing a market because you're only going to four sixty-five.
Correct, yeah, I would agree with that.
What, what is the meal different, the adult meal different than the kid meal?
Portion size.
Portion size, so it's more.
It's a larger portion.
I mean, like I said, they're not buying it now, right, like, it's not, it's, I mean, that's not, that's not, that's not a fully tr- there are, I'm sure, staff members that do buy the lunches.
There are.
I'm not saying there are none, I'm just saying.
It's a shift in looking at a compliance issue to.
Right.
All right, you're just, you're taking a step.
But the compliance issue is minimum.
That's correct.
Do you know?
And that's what this reference.
It's a minimum threshold, not a, not a, not a, no. A minimum threshold.
Um, yeah, I think, uh, voting this would make us in compliance, and I think what Bryce is talking about is having a different approach to it, the strategy.
But for the sake of getting where you need to, today I don't have a qualm.
Correct, I understand, I understand what you're saying, absolutely.
So perhaps that's something that the food subcommittee could be, could be exploring.
Yes.
You know, what could we do to make it more appealing and more?
And that's, that's absolutely.
You have, it's like being at the airport, like, you've got an, you've got an attentive audience, you know what I mean? Like, they're, they're there, right, like, you know, it's, and, and, you know, so anyways, it's just, just a, a, a different way to view it, but I, I hear where you're coming from, from a compliance consideration, so that's, I don't have an issue there, I just, I think that, um, yeah, anyways. Thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
Uh, Kristen, Lauren, or Joan? We can take a motion if we want.
I'll make a motion.
Good.
So, hold on, feed it to me, 'cause I.
We can go right down to the last paragraph if that's helpful.
Yeah, right on, okay, so I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommended increase to the second meal price for students from three dollars and twenty-five cents to three dollars and eighty-five cents, and increase the adult meal price from four dollars and ten cents to four dollars and seventy cents. Effective.
Second.
Effective April first, twenty twenty-four.
Correct.
Any other information we need in that motion? Good, okay. Motion by Bryce, seconded by Joan, any discussion? Seeing none, Lauren?
Yes.
Joan? Joan?
Is that me?
Yes. Kristen?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
And myself is a yes, so it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Alrighty. Sometimes my thing goes off of it. So we are going to, um, the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Sure, so before I turn it over to Keith, um, as the committee is aware, the MSBA did invite the town of, of Northborough to study, um, p- a potential new elementary building at Peaslee. That is MSBA's core building program. The other program that MSBA runs is its accelerated repair program. Last year, due to, um, economic conditions, it paused i- its repair program. It re-initiated it, um, this past January, I believe, opened its window. And basically, the accelerated repair program helps districts focus on, uh, roofs and windows in this round. So, um, Keith is working on a statement of interest, and he'll talk about what we're hoping to focus on. This requires two votes, uh, one vote of approval from the school committee for us to submit on behalf of the district. And the other vote is required from the select board. Um, I have provided select board with the language, and I believe they're going to take it up at their next meeting, I believe. Um, it needs to be submitted by March first, so. So you're voting first, and then the select board will vote second, uh, at its meeting, and then hopefully we have everything we need to submit. So Keith, do you want to talk about the focus?
Absolutely, so the, um, the focus is something that, uh, many of the members have heard before. The, uh, Z roof is, has been on the capital plan for some time now. Um, we did have the opportunity to have it inspected once again, just to validate some of the concerns that existed, and they are unchanged. Uh, and the recommendation is for the flat portion of the Z roof, as well as the pitched roof, which would be the shingle portion, uh, to be, uh, completely replaced, um, a- as part of the statement of interest. So as part of the statement of interest, and a, and a copy of the draft is included in your, your packet, it does go through a series of different questions, the most important being, why is it identified as in a priority? And obviously, the replacement for the purposes of energy efficiency i- is right there, and the reduction of maintenance costs is at the top. And at the bottom of the, um, um, a statement of interest is a series of questions that have to be answered. Uh, these are very similar responses that we've done in the past. The only addition, which I thought was i- important to identify, is our work with the potential of a solar, uh, project on, on the Z roof. So if this roof were to be accepted into the statement of interest process and the feasibility process, uh, we would also continue to explore whether or not a solar array could be done, only if the replacement occurred. So the idea is that because we have done that pre-work, uh, and getting ourselves in the queue for a solar project, uh, perhaps MSBA would look more finely upon our statement of interest. So really, the preparation is done in two separate ways. One is for, uh, its solar possibility, as well as the assessment that was done by a roof consultant, uh, Garland Roofing, who has been very supportive of us in the district over the years, and we use him as being, uh, on the cutting edge of technology and other methods to, uh, get our, um, large capital projects accomplished. So, uh, this document is not very different than what we have submitted in prior years. Uh, the program was suspended last year, so that's why we didn't submit one, otherwise we would. Um, and now we are at the point where we're ready to do it again, um, and would love the committee's support for this submission.
I'll make a motion. I move to approve the submission of a statement of interest to the MSBA for their accelerated repair program as it rego- as it pertains to the Z roof.
Is there specific verbiage, or?
There is.
There is.
So I didn't see it, um.
It's on page thirty-four of our packet.
Thank, thank you, Lauren.
Thirty-four? Oh, it's the final one, got it.
Sorry. You want the whole thing?
Please. Yes.
Okay, um, I'm ru- I move to approve the sim- sorry, I'm, how, now?
It is worded funky.
Result?
Um.
Can you just?
Having convened in an open meeting on February seventh, twenty twenty-four, I move the school committee of Northborough, in accordance with a char- its charter, bylaws, and ordinance, to vote to authorize the superintendent to submit the ma- to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated February twenty twenty-four for the Marion E. Z. School located at thirty-three Howard Street, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future for replacement of the EPDM and shingled roofing system under priority number five. Keep going?
Yes.
And hereby further specifically acknowledge that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an. the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the town of Northborough to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Wolf.
Does it, um, does it matter that it says just dated February twenty twenty-four versus dated February?
That, that, that's okay.
That one's okay, okay, perfect, so we got a motion by Bryce.
Second.
Joan seconding, Joan, I want you to repeat back. Motion, motion by Bryce seconding.
Oh, my microphone's off, I'm sorry.
Motion by Bryce, seconded by Joan. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, uh, Lauren?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Myself as a yes, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You don't remember doing that a couple of years ago, Kelly?
I do remember that.
It didn't change much.
And I do remember being tongue-tied the same way.
Tongue-tied, it was a word salad, man.
Because it's, it's, it's not.
I get why it's that way.
Yeah, I do too.
You're thinking that, okay, I'm just gonna read it, but then you're like, what?
You can just read it.
Doesn't really apply with.
Didn't exactly flow off the tongue, did it?
No.
I'll give them that feedback if you'd like.
Yes, please, please, please do, no, don't. That might deter them from, from liking us.
Thank you.
Alrighty, um, approval of grants.
So we have a very generous, generous donation, um, from the Z PTO, an amount of eleven thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, um, for the replacement of the existing stage curtain with a new, um, new stage curtain, so. Drama is a very important component of what happens at Z School, so this is a great addition, and we're very thankful for the donation.
Do you have any pictures?
Not yet, ch- no, no.
None of?
Quite there, yeah.
Yeah, is it, it's just old?
Yes, and, and, uh, and disrepair.
Yeah. And, um, are they gonna be the same, like, mechanic type things, or are they like upgrading?
Upgrading that.
It's blue, that's what I'm thinking, like, top on, top off, get it open.
Not quite, but the rigging and things of that nature to make it safer and updated and, uh, for ease of use as well.
Yeah, that's great.
Very appreciative.
That's great, Joan?
I have a question. On the age of the curtain, is that curtain from when we renovated Z School? Or is that the curtain that was there when a previous private school was there?
Joan, I asked that question, and I'm, I'm not a hundred percent certain, but I was told through channels that it was replaced in nineteen ninety-eight when the renovation occurred, but I don't have absolute confirmation, I asked the same question.
Either way.
Either way.
It's, it's, it's crazy.
Seen better days.
Yeah. Can imagine the allergens it's holding.
Each curtains could talk.
I know.
Hey Kelly, can I make a motion?
Yes, please, Joan.
I move that we approve the, and, and accept with gratitude the donation to the Z School from the Z School PTO in the amount of eleven thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, estimate. Resting stage curtain and production and installation of a new stage curtain at Z School.
Second.
Motion by Bryce, or motion by Joan, seconded by Bryce. Any discussion? Seeing none. Uh, Lauren?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Myself as a yes. Thank you so much, the, um, School PTO, for raising that money and, um, giving it back to the schools to help with this enormous expense, you know?
I also wanna thank Scott Arnold, um, one of the music teachers at Z for his work to facilitate this, and Principal Bell, they worked very closely together to make it happen, so. Very appreciative of his efforts.
Thank you so much. Okay, no old business at this time. Superintendent, report to the committee, enrollments.
Sure, so in your packet is the enrollment report as of January twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four. So we don't have any significant variance from the last report. I will note that we did look at the number of sections at each grade level for FY twenty-five, and we moved sections forward. So we're watching class sizes very closely, but at this point in time, um, we are within school committee's class size policy, um, in all grade levels, um, and we'll watch this throughout the next, uh, several weeks and months ahead.
Uh, question for the kindergarten. What's, how's it looking for next year, and then I know we took one away from Proctor, I'm assuming we're gonna put it back for first grade?
Correct, so the, um, budget assumption that we made in the FY twenty-five recommended budget was two sections of kindergarten at each of our schools.
Okay.
So that is, that is what is funded, we are watching kindergarten enrollment very carefully, it's the most volatile in terms of our enrollment. But at, as of, uh, today, it's, it's a little bit lower than we had anticipated, but it's still early in the process.
Bryce?
A little bit of a self-interest question here, but I'm sure there are other parents who might have this. Pre-K kids at FINN?
Yes.
Is that an auto-roll-up?
It is.
It is, okay, so anybody who has pre-K kids at FINN?
No, no, no one.
You're okay.
However, it does require some additional, uh, forms that need to be completed that Jennifer Henry has communicated to the families, and they should be connecting with their receiving school, um, to provide those.
Okay, thank you for the clarity there.
You're welcome. Right, Mrs. Duggan?
So also, um, under the superintendent's report, um, I'll skip to number three, and four is FY twenty-five budget priorities, which we reviewed in the school committee and the recommended budget and the budget calendar. Um, and I will turn it over, um, to Becky for the FY twenty-four monthly general fund expenditure report.
So as I mentioned frequently, um, we do review our budgets on a regular basis, and we're constantly making adjustments as we see some trends that start to occur throughout the year. So you will notice that the monthly general fund report as of January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four was up slightly from December, um, it was an increase of about forty-seven thousand dollars, um, where we had one hundred and ninety-seven thousand five hundred and ninety-eight dollars, or zero point seven one percent remaining. Some of the lines where you'll see, um, some of the biggest variances, um, are in our substitute costs. So we really did take a look at projecting out what we think we will need. I will say, I think we're a little bit conservative in our numbers, so we may have a little bit more on that line, but I'd rather be conservative and have, um, the funds than not. And we've also moved some funds from our teacher salary line item to a newly created long-term sub, um, line item that is in compliance with the DESI chart of accounts. We've also been looking at our heating costs, um, and so, uh, we have made some adjustments to that. Um, we did see a price increase, um, that happened in October with our natural gas, so, um, those heating cost increases are a result of that increase. And then finally, special education transportation line, um, where we did, uh, had a change, which is actually to the positive of about one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Again, doing a little bit more closer analysis of the routes and what we are, um, paying as we go along throughout the year. The other thing I wanted to mention is at last month's meeting, um, we did talk about the FY twenty-three supplemental budget for special education costs, the fourteen percent tuition. And so we did receive a little more direction on that, um, over the past month. So we do intend to apply for that supplemental, um, funding, as well as for extraordinary relief, um, through circuit breaker. That is due to DESI by March eighth, which is, um, earlier than normal, and we will be doing, um, both of those filings, you file them together, and they will then determine what you qualify for, we do anticipate that we will qualify for both of those funds. The difference between them is with extraordinary relief, we do have to apply those funds to this fiscal year's budget, and then with the supplemental funding, we can either use it in this fiscal year, or we can carry it into next fiscal year. So that is all I have on the FY twenty-four budget.
So, um, did, did I hear it, so are you thinking of for next year adding an additional permanent sub-type thing, or no?
You're just. No, we created a line, um, which is for long-term subs, so when we have teachers who are out on leave.
Yeah.
DESI's classification is different, where it's over thirty days is considered a long-term, um, sub. And so what we've been doing is we've had to really try to remember and tease out those, um, sub costs from our other lines. So having one account, um, which is an account number that DESI does give us, will make it much easier when we're doing our end-of-year reporting. And I think it will give us a better sense for, um, where our expenses are in that category as well.
Question about the application of the funds, the two channels. One, you said must be applied to current. If approved, must be applied to current. What would you, yeah, what, what? Are you, are we, I don't know how to necessarily phrase this, are we eligible for it if we're not proving the bottom line is, is in requirement of an extraordinary? Need, in need of an extraordinary subsidy?
So we are eligible for it because our, our special education costs have increased, um, twenty-five percent more than what they were in the previous fiscal year. Um, and so that is, we, that would qualify us for those, for that reimbursement from the state. So we would be able to apply that towards our current special education costs that we have.
And what, how do you, um, kinda close the loop there on what would have already been funded? Where does the surplus go?
So the surplus would go towards, um, potentially pre-purchasing some of the goods and materials for next fiscal year.
Awesome, yeah, that's kinda what I was, sorry.
We're also able to, to prepay under state law, state municipal finance law, um, prepay certain tuitions for special education as well, so we would look to those as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion to approve until audited. Joan?
I move that we accept until audited the FY twenty-four monthly general fund expenditure report as presented tonight, until audited. Second.
Is that Lauren? Is that Lauren?
I believe so.
Motion by Joan, seconded by Lauren, any more discussion? None, Lauren?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Myself as a yes, passes unanimously, thank you very much. Budget priorities, budget calendar, I mean, we've kind of already reviewed that. School committee member reports. Lauren, do you have anything?
Yes, uh, the Coalition met earlier this month, uh, or I guess in January, and, um, so we are working on trying to, um, take, can you, it, it's called Story Bridge, correct?
Yes, correct.
Our Story Bridge event, um, and sort of take it to the next level, so that's, that was sort of the main, um, point of discussion is, is how do we take these stories and do more with them beyond just a one-night event? So we came up with some great ideas, we are trying to increase the membership of our committee as well, as well as meet more frequently, so those were some of our goals, um, and discussion topics.
Great. Joan, do you have anything?
Uh, no, I'll pass, I have nothing tonight.
Okay. Kristen?
Yeah, the Wellness Committee met in January as well, um, so they wake up, updates from Encompass Coalition, which is a substance abuse prevention group, cafeteria directors, the Food Study Working Group, high school health and fitness department chair, and they're gonna be evaluating their wellness policy. Uh, on March eighth, they have SEL Day, and on April tenth, they're gonna have Wellness Day, so they're currently working on events to happen during that day. And that's part of Wellness Week, which will be April eighth through the twelfth. And so there'll be a lot of planning across the town with the Wellness Committee as well. And they are looking forward to incorporating more wellness and purposefully incorporating more wellness into the Wellness Days for next school year as well.
Great. Bryce?
Yeah, so, uh, LPAC met last week, um, at Algonquin, and it was, uh, was great, now Dr. Webb and her colleagues led just an incredible evening of, of kind of storytelling and, and feedback from the families. I think there, what stuck out to me is just, just how well positioned it would seem that Greg and the team at the central office, um, has put that group to really be of service to those community members that we have here in Northborough, Southborough and, and Algonquin. And so that was just really wonderful to see, and, and, and the work that they're doing, and one of the things that stuck out to me, and it, because it's not something I would have thought about, so, I wanted to say it out loud here, is the idea of, uh, maintaining home languages as children grow. And the, not just familial significance, but the cultural significance of being, understanding as a community that that is an impact that an English learner feels throughout their education journey. And so that was just kind of a really cool anecdote. And then, secondly, there's two events coming up in March, one is the seventeenth.
Yeah, I don't have the dates, um, that, the, um.
Or this.
The music cultural.
Yeah, I believe.
There's international night.
International night, and then.
And then the cultural music and dance and art.
So those should be, those should be fun nights for folks.
And we'll have those dates for the March meeting.
Yep, thank you, Greg.
Yeah. Great. Alright, um. Lauren?
Um, and then I just also forgot about the policy subcommittee, um, we met last week, Kristen and I were there. And so I did wanna just let everyone know that, um, the policies we discussed at our December joint meeting, um, we just went through them again, um, and so those will be brought back to our March meeting. We did, um, discuss in, in, at length about student travel and, and sort of the direction of, um, looking at our student travel policies, um, specifically at the high school, but also potentially at the elementary and middle school levels as well. And Kristen, I don't know if you had anything else about our public relations policies that we discussed at the end of the meeting, I did have to step out early.
No, I think that that's in the early stages in the committee, so the subcommittee is gonna talk about it for a few more meetings, and it probably will come back for, till the fall or late fall.
Is, is that in regard, is that in regards to like sponsorship, things like that, or no? Is public relations, is that something different?
The sponsorship policies.
The policies that we were reviewing, um, or, or looking to review in the future, um, had to do, um, more with, with policy manuals, so printed materials.
Okay.
Protection of instructional time, um, media releases in terms of, you know, school committee roles, um, distribution of printed materials to students on school grounds, and then visitation and observer, observation policy, so all really related to our manuals.
Okay. Um, one thing to bring back to the policy committee potentially, in looking at sponsorship for PTOs and, and raising funds and things like that, there's really no policy in the K through eight about, um, like fundraising and sponsorship from businesses and things like that, the high school does have something, um, but, but K through eight doesn't. And it might be something that we wanna explore and kind of, um, figure out if that's something that we should have, I think it, I think it would help to have some guidance, um, to PTOs to know what they can and can't do or should or shouldn't. to know what they can and can't do or should or shouldn't do and what we can accept and can, cannot accept and shouldn't accept and from who and not. So I think it might, it might, it might help us to look into that a little bit.
I do have a recommendation. So although, you know, the joint policy subcommittees meet and we try to align our policies, there are subtle differences between each of the three districts. So it is possible also to convene the Northborough Policy Subcommittee to focus on a single policy that is unique to just Northborough. And my recommendation would be, this is one such policy that it would make sense.
Okay. Sounds good. And then for my updates, NSPAC, they had a workshop in Anxiety last night. But next Thursday on February 15th, they will have their coffee and connect at Barilla Coffee in Northborough. So you can register for that on their webpage. They've, they've also been meeting with the board and what's to come is the new IEP process and things like that. That's been a topic of getting families prepared for the new changes that are going to be coming next year in the fall. So getting the word out on that has been a big, a big effort for them. I think that's it for me. I'm sure I'll think of something. There's no educational policy at this time. Policy development and distribution, there's none at this time. Personnel, distribution of personnel report.
Sue, in your packet is the personnel report. As of February 7th, there have been a number of appointments, leave of absences and resignations to due date of January 15th to let us know if folks are coming back. Did result in some people who are out on leave of absence who will not, who will not be returning in the fall. So they are recorded. And you'll also notice that, you know, ESP positions continue to be the most volatile positions. People arriving and people resigning from those positions. And it continues to be an area of hiring that is extremely challenging. And we're continuing to try to recruit and advertise in a way that makes these positions really attractive. But talking to colleagues in surrounding districts, they are faced with the same challenges. People are just not applying for these positions. So something that we're keeping an eye on.
Something that I noticed on the resignations, and it's also something that Kristen brought up to me and we're mentioning, is the resignation of the crossing guard at Lincoln Street. Do they not have any crossing guard right now? Is it?
I believe it is an, we are, we've posted. I believe it is an unfilled position at this point in time, not because we don't want a crossing guard, but no one has applied or stepped up.
I think, I think they're using existing stuff right now to make it happen.
Existing stuff, okay. Kristen, did you hear more about concerns? I think you mentioned to me that families reached out to you or something about it.
Yeah, yeah, a couple of families reached out to me. I think they're using staff in the afternoon to bring the kids from the school across to the crosswalk, but there's nobody there in the morning. So like when the kids are coming to school, the parents are very concerned because that is a main road. And I mean, people go way faster than they're allowed to be do down Lincoln Street too all the time. So they were concerned about that and hoping maybe in the short term, an officer could be nearby or they could have staff in the crosswalk in the morning as well. Because it was said in the afternoon, they do have somebody walk the students out. It's in the morning that there's no one there.
I think too, many, many parents parked across the street and have their kids walk across the street to avoid kind of the longer parent pickup line. So it is something we're working on. And then one of the challenges too is that the safety light for school zone needs to be replaced. We're working with the town to try to make that happen. So I think one of my recommendations is for the school committee to write a letter to the town that to make the school safety zone signs a priority. Because it, it does make a difference. It is one more tool in our toolbox to try to make sure that walking to, to school and crossing streets is safe for our students.
Are there any other schools that need?
At present, both, both sets on Lincoln Street. So the set for Melican and the set for Lincoln Street is not working properly at the moment.
Okay, so we want to write a letter to the Board of Select?
I would say to the town administrator, CC the Select Board.
Yep. Bryce?
Dr. Martino, are you hearing then, you know, when you're hearing from these other districts that they're really having a hard time with this ESP position? Are people getting to a place where they're willing to say that's, it's not the people, it's the position? And there would be a worthwhile kind of review of the job itself, not just the lack of interest?
Yeah, I don't think it's, it's the job. I think it is, and we're seeing this across our, our positions that we advertise. People have a lot of choices in terms of the labor market. One of the challenges with the ESP position is that it's, it's 180-day, 185-day position. And if it were a full year position, the salary would be appropriate. But with it being 180 days, it's.
So it's falling below what would be an annualized market threshold for most people.
So if you, so if you annualize it for a full year, it's about a $45,000 position.
Which for, which for a decent amount of folks, that would be an entry point into a pipeline that would grow a different kind of career.
Correct, correct.
But at the 180 mark or 185?
It's. It ranges between 25,000 to 35,000 depending on a person's level of experience.
And so some of the rapid turnover, I guess for me is what's, what sticks out. It's not, it's not the like, yeah, they were, they were here last year and it was great. And they went and did something like, some of these are like 10 days.
Yeah, I will, I will share that. One of the challenges is that because we're not having a lot of applicants, we do interview all candidate supply.
I get it, yeah.
And one of the challenges is, you know, I would say pre-pandemic, some of the people we are offering positions to, we may not have.
I understand, I understand, I understand. Still brings me back to then.
How do we make it attractive?
Yeah, yeah. And, and sometimes it's the market and sometimes it's the position.
Well, I think the one that I can share with you, some ideas that we have and some of the things we're trying. So we're also trying to differentiate our, our district compared to surrounding districts. So really thinking about how we can make it a, one step in career advancement. So joining our district and then offering, you know, degree opportunities to become educators, then to work in our district as, as educators. So really trying to create that, that opportunity for people who see it as a stepping stone, not a destination.
Even then, at that end, right, you'd have to be, you'd have to be some quick steps for a lot of, for a lot of folks.
Well, we have a lot of ESPs who, you know, are interested in becoming educators, maybe career changers and really looking at the pathways that we can help them become educators. We've had success. We've had a number of ESPs who, you know, we've supported through degree programs and, and they are outstanding educators. But I do think that, you know, it's, it's something that we need to look more closely at. I don't see, I don't see a, a solution on the horizon. The only solution really is if the economy changes, the job market changes.
I think it's just, it's important to just ignore, also acknowledge that like that churn has a, has a lot of knock-on effects. You know, not that you're not aware, I just, just that, and for, for us is like, you know, if it's, if it's not just us, right? Like, you know, it's going to be a broader stroke issue, broader picture issue. Yeah. Sorry. Thank you.
Okay.
I'll just, can I just also, just want to acknowledge the HR department. So Heather Richards has been on a leave of absence since November, early November. We anticipate her return shortly, which we're excited about. But Nina Wall and Elaine Chisholm, who work in the HR Department, have been doing an amazing job supporting all of the work that we do. We are people business, so there's no shortage of, of HR work that happens, that happens on a daily basis. And they've done a tremendous job and we haven't missed a beat as a result of their effort. So I just want to acknowledge them and we do look forward to Heather's return. But in the meantime, they'll continue supporting the work that we do in HR.
Great. Communications, none at this time. Actions on minutes. We have an open meeting minute and then a joint policy development Subcommittee. Lauren?
I'll make the motion to approve the open meeting minutes of January 3rd, 2024, and to approve the Joint Policy Development Subcommittee Open Meeting Minutes of October 23rd, 20, it should say 2023.
Okay, so January 3rd, 2024. Motion by Lauren, seconded by Joan. Any discussion? Seeing none. I'm just double checking that the date was 2023. Okay, yep.
The policy is written as 2023 in the actual minutes, so I just checked.
Yep, perfect. Okay, motion by Lauren, seconded by Joan, no discussion. Lauren?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Myself is a yes, passes unanimously. Future agenda items, presentation cycle. You want to review it for?
So I think we'll follow the presentation cycle. I believe we have another PTO presentation.
I think we're going to do two.
Two.
Yep.
And then also we have a curriculum presentation. And so I'll, I'll review the cycle and add that to the agenda for our discussion when we need to talk about it.
Perfect. Greg and I did meet with Dana from the Northborough Cable Access Television today. So we haven't debriefed yet from the meeting, so we'll debrief and figure out. Just of it is that the cable company is putting a request for ARPA funds to do technology in the town hall, in the library, in the schools. Like they're putting it, putting it through for a lot of different things. So we would love to get in on that for figuring out our meeting spaces. And Greg and I are going to explore potentially a different location. I don't know if anyone's opposed to that. If they really love being here in the library at Melican, the climate, the sound. If you really want it, then we won't explore it, but, so we're going to explore that, so.
Public hearing.
Public hearing for the budget, that's what I was going to say, the public hearing. Which, okay, explain to me again, why don't we do the public hearing? And then the school committee do it. To me, it seems like, I feel like this month should have been the public hearing for everybody to hear it. And then, is it because we, like?
It has to be approved.
It's in preparation for town meeting. So the public hearing is in preparation to provide the citizens information for the town meeting.
It's like order of operations kind of thing.
Yeah. But do you, do you, do you see where, like you would think that you'd want, I mean, you would want input, but.
I think, I think there are a lot of opportunities along the journey.
Oh, yeah, we've got lots of, for people to get feedback. You know, they won't hear, a lot of people don't hear it until like the town meeting in April.
But it does make sense.
But it seems like, yeah, because I feel like that's what happened a couple of years back, was people came for the public hearing and then they got really upset because it was already.
It was voted.
Voted on. And they're like, well, then why are we here if it's already done?
Because it hasn't, but it hasn't been put into law, so to speak. Like it hasn't been put into, been codified on the municipal level. So, yes.
I mean, I think we have had conversations or, and continue to have conversations around how we can improve the budget process.
Yes.
You know, both at getting, you know, more school feedback and input on the budget as we kind of move through on the process. And also how can we get more community stakeholder input and feedback in the process? I think we do send out a lot of information, but people receive a lot of information. It's hard to keep track of all the meetings that take place. But it's something we're working on and there's more, more area for growth and improvement in that part of our work.
Sounds good. All right. Just let us know if there's anything else you want added or discussed for next month's meeting. Audience sharing. There, there will be, I know they touched upon it during some of the things. Kindness Week is next week. And part of the Kindness Week is they do different coffee hours with different people around town.
Very important people.
Very, very important people. This year, they, they invited the school committee and Superintendent Martino to be a, a talk. So we will be next Friday at the library. So if there's any other school committee members that are available and want to be present, let us know. We can have Cheryl post something, but otherwise Greg and I will go and represent and answer any questions. Bring them back. All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:39.
So moved?
Second?
Motion by Joan, seconded by Bryce. Lauren?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kristen?